What was the intent of this?
Yeah, the commission may recall that we had a couple of utility undergrounding applications that came before you in a row. And that raised some questions around the procedures, the application materials. And so we just have Dylan has a few brief slides. In order to kind of talk through what we think a couple of those issues are. And then we were looking to see if he wanted to give us any feedback or direction on how you'd like to see those applications received in the future and how we might provide analysis for you. So Dylan will go ahead and walk you through a couple of slides and then we'd be happy to hear your discussion.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Dylan.
Can everyone see my screen? Okay. All right. Okay, so tonight's discussion is designed to provide direction and guidance to staff on how to administer underground exception requests. Given the lack of both direction and guidance within the town code, staff has struggled in the last couple of years with what information to gather from the applicant for consideration of these requests and what review criteria must be met in order to support a recommendation of approval for the planning commission. So staff will begin this discussion with a brief overview of what exactly the code requires for underground utilities. So the town code requires overhead service to be trenched underground. If the electrical service panel or meter is relocated, the overhead wire route is changed. The service connection point to the structure is changed. Or service upgrades of above 100 amps is proposed. The town code also allows for the planning commission to grant an exception of these requirements if it is infeasible or impracticable to do so. And there is no reasonable alternative design. The code also allows the planning commission to establish policy to administer this section of the code, which is the main topic of tonight's discussion. So the code provides for a determination of infeasible or impracticable. And with no reasonable alternative design, the code provides for a determination of infeasible or impracticability. And with no reasonable alternative decide in determining approval of exception request. However, the code doesn't clearly define these determinations. So just historically, in a 2014 memorandum to the planning commission, then interim planning director Karen Christensen noted that previous reasons for granting exceptions included high cost relative to the cost and or size of the project, potential impacts on significant trees, potential impact to underground utilities such as gas, water and sewer lines, and site complications such as steep topography. She also noted that aesthetics was a limited reason, particularly if the neighborhood predominantly has overhead connections, but also conceded that the ordinance was designed for one project at a time, not collectively. Thus, these past reasons have been the precedence generally staff has used in initially reviewing request to determine feasibility or practicability. And also if there is a reasonable alternative design exist. However, as indicated in the 2014 memorandum, staff has struggled with this for quite some time. And so based on this precedence, staff has generally asked for a limited amount of information from the applicant such as a justification letter, arborist report, a trenching quote, which could be from the same contractor doing the overall project, and the project's valuation. So based on the planning commission's feedback on recently considered request, staff has requested additional information from the applicants. Now, the additional items staff request are things such as the PG&E design plan, an additional quote from an outside contractor who specializes in trenching, a utility plan, and photos of the site. These items that are additional cost borne by the applicant are noted in this slide with a dollar sign in the parentheses. So while staff understands that these born costs are part of the review process, staff wanted to note that applicants have expressed displeasure with these additional costs associated with the information gathering exercise. So in order to better serve applicants who request exceptions, staff has identified two areas of improvement. The first is to create a submittal checklist to provide applicants to ensure a complete packet is forwarded to the commission for consideration. So one question staff has for the commission tonight for this area of improvement is if the commission thinks any additional info is required for a deliberation of such request. And so the second area of improvement staff identified is to establish criteria for evaluating request. So metrics such as additional cost increase percentages percentage that staff could review request against would allow for clear guidance both to staff and the applicant on the feasibility or practicability of their exception request. So one question staff had for the commission in this area of improvement is is if the commission feels evaluation criteria should be established. And if so, what criterion? And so with that, this concludes staff's brief presentation on the topic and we're available for discussion.
Great, thanks Dylan. So commissioners, do you have any questions for Dylan before we start discussions?
I do. The second point on criteria, how would they be used? I'm a little unclear on practically how they fit into the process and if they'd be limiting.
I'm not sure I understanding your question. Can you restate that for me so I can make sure I understand?
Well, what would the criteria be used for first?
We're thinking about it as if, you know, most of the projects that we review, we have specific findings, five or seven findings. And so we know what we are analyzing for. And we know what information to gather and we have a frame of reference of how to analyze it so that you can make a decision. On this one, because they're not really findings, there's just this one statement about it being feasible and practical. That's pretty broad. And so we're looking for guidance on whether you want to define feasible and practical more and give us some criteria that we could analyze around or perhaps not. If you know what I mean, the commission doesn't think that is warranted.
So I can see the value in enabling you to ask for the right information going in. But like from a framework perspective, would those criteria prevent us in the future from being able to, you know, consider things that are very unique to the situation? That's what I'm trying to get at here.
I think that's a good question. I think the planning commission has the authority within the code to set its own sort of guideline for this section. So you certainly, if you wanted to set criteria that was semi-formal, and if you wanted us to publish it or share it with applicants, then you would certainly want to include kind of the last one, which is, you know, whatever site specific characteristics that, you know, are part of that analysis. If you wanted it to be that formal, if you didn't want it to be that formal, then we would just know that, you know, when we're working on projects that we look at everything on a case by case basis according to that site.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
And you have a comment? You're muted.
Yeah, I know. Dylan, could you go put your slide up that had the then and now? Yeah, great. Yeah. Yeah, that one. What is a utility plan?
There we go. So a utility plan is essentially a plan drawn by a civil engineer that shows the location of all underground and overhead utilities. So typically, you would provide this to determine what are the impacts of any trenching work that would be required for undergrowing.
I see. So people probably have had to effectively get this just to get the trench quote done, which they almost certainly are paying for already, right?
It depends. Typically, the design, we've only had one project go through PG&E's design process as of today. And typically, their design plan only refers to the trench path for their equipment. They generally do not include all other utilities in that design. So it's a very focused scoped plan. The utility plan is a little bit more broad. It shows all of the information on the site easements, structures, tree locations, those type of things. So I would say the one example I have did not include that information.
I see. But if somebody on the, under the then column, it says one trench quote word, I mean, surely every homeowner that wants, that is worried about having to underground gets a trench quote, right? That would effectively have the information from the utility plan that they had to go through a French drain and then a sewer and then.
Well, I think part of it, sorry Dylan, is the level of formality. And so you would have, you would have knowledge of your own property and your contractor may be able to sketch something for you as opposed to a utility plan is typically going to be formal and drawn by a civil engineer. And so if you're doing a big project, like a significant addition and remodel, you would typically have a utility plan. But if you were doing a small project, this could be significant cost to be able to provide this a formal.
I see, formal version of it. I got it. Thank you. That's all my questions right now.
And do we know why? I mean, you guys added utility planned. What was the intent?
So based on the last, not the most recent planning commission meeting, but the one previously, staff understood feedback from planning commission related to the location of trees. And outside of an arborist report, having a map of trees, typically staff uses a utility plan to determine the location of trees. It sounds odd, but that's generally how they're drawn. Also, it provides all of the additional information that we need with respect to the underground utilities such as gas, water and sewer. So rather than relying on an arborist report for a map of just trees, we expanded it to things that we generally use for, as Laura mentioned, for more broader, more robust, robust projects where we do have a utility plan. There's really, the challenge would be what is the middle ground to get that information through another mechanism, which is kind of the reason for this discussion and clarity as well.
Dylan, go ahead. So the PG&E design plan, can you refresh me as to what was, when did we see that one? And what was, what does that one entail?
So that one is, that one entails, actually, that was not one that the planning commission saw. This was one that we had applied for and was subsequently withdrawn primarily for the reasons we're discussing tonight, just due to the arduous task of gathering other documents. So the PG&E plan that that applicant submitted had information that PG&E had gathered from them, the applicant, in terms of drawing up a trench design. So essentially, it just showed the path of travel for the underground trench for the PG&E crew on site to underground the equipment. It's not really a robust plan. It's just that, but that was not one that planning commission actually saw. It was one the department received, but was subsequently withdrawn just due to the applicant's request.
And is that the one that cost a couple thousand dollars?
Correct. So this one is that, that, this is the one that I used for information related to the last meeting. This is one that does require a 1,500 deposit that is applied to the final engineering work. If PG&E does the trenching work, otherwise they use that for their design services, for their staff engineers and inspectors to go out. So essentially, it is a cost to have that design drawn up.
And if the, if a applicant ends up needing to do the undergroundering, does everything on the right hand side kind of automatically get done as part of going through with that undergroundering?
My understanding is yes. Typically, when people know they have to underground, they go the exception route. And so the information we asked for previously was limited. But now we are including all the information they would have to gather regardless if they move forward with undergroundering, which is what is happening with the case in point that I'm discussing about the design plan project that was withdrawn after we received it.
Craig, I thought of more questions I have for Dylan. Did you just say that virtually everyone that has to underground asks for an exception?
My experience in the short time I've been on staff is when a service upgrade or any other trigger is that trigger it, the scope of work triggers the code. Generally, people have applied for the exception. So it's pretty, I'd say not 100% probability, I'd say 90% of the time, people apply for the exception because the understanding from the residents' perspective is that it is easily acquired.
I see. So that is interesting that rarely do people say, oh yeah, I need to underground and I can see that's important to the town. So let me go dig that trench. They don't go there.
Well, and I think that we're observing some recent trends where there was a couple of applications within one neighborhood and neighbors and friends that were talking to each other. So I don't know that this really represents a long term trend. There are lots of projects in town that, you know, underground their utilities with large projects and that's fairly routine. But there was this little trend of everyone talking to each other and saying, oh, it's easy, just apply for to get your utilities undergrounded.
Okay. And I have one more question on this arborist report. Is that understood to have a certain quality with it? We had one application and I thought the arborist report was just very minimal. And I even had a resident call me and tell me, yeah, that was unacceptable. I don't think that arborist even visited. Um, when it says an arborist report, is there some standard to which people follow? Or you really could just hire, hire anybody and they write most anything?
Yeah, that's a great question. So typically, you know, arborists are certified, they're ISO certified. So it really depends on the person you hire, whether or not they're, what they charge you, you know, if they're neutral or for you or not. It's, there's a lot of competing parts in that. Generally, the previous review that I did on arborist reports was as long as the arborist made an assertion that a tree within the path would be impacted, that was sufficient, that was the threshold. Since then, the threshold has been, has risen a little bit with respect to the arborist report needs to include more information on what we typically see for a more robust project. So there could be a cost differential between someone just going out and making an assessment, a visual assessment versus having to do a tree survey, draw up a map, et cetera. It's, it's based on their time and materials. So the short answer is staff has kind of raised the bar to what we typically see with other projects that are more robust in determining if this is sufficient for a complete application for review and forwarding to the commission. One thing I wanted to add to the previous question was the other reason why people generally apply for the exception is because the threshold for the service upgrades or people doing EV charging stations or solar photovoltaic is a very common thing these days. People are, so those projects, that scope of project realm creates kind of a catch 22. They have to upgrade their service per their electrician's recommendation. They hear that it's an easy process to go through, so they figure, why not? Let's just do it. So it's kind of those two competing items of why there is an increase in these exception requests coming through the department. I just wanted to add that into the picture a little bit, just color it in a bit more.
Yeah, good. Can I ask you on that arborist, you said something important that I think I suspected. Arborists can be kind of an agent of the homeowner, the person paying them such that there may not be a kind of set standard. You, you could get different arborists and depending on who paid that arborist, the report could sound more or less favorable to the trees. Can I say, is that true or is that too cynical?
Um, I mean, it's, it's a great point and it's just one of the common, you know, concerns. You know, when you have the homeowner paying for the arborist. But in my experience, arborists, because they are certified, they do have a professional reputation. I would say more than likely their recommendations are sounds. They may be colored with the intent of the homeowner in some instances, but I mean, that's, that is kind of the eternal struggle without not having a peer review like a town arborist to determine and to go out, which could add to cost. So staff generally relies on that professional's expertise and recommendations to determine the best path forward or the impacts to the tree is the best way. So I wouldn't say cynical would be a best word to use. I'd say it's just, just kind of the, the nature of the beast when, you know, the homeowner is paying for the professional to do it. There is opportunity for that, but it doesn't happen very frequently, I find.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff before we move to comments in public?
Nicholas? Yeah, this is Nicholas.
Yep.
The question is in the proposal, do we have a letter from the fire marshal?
We generally do not at this time, mainly because we have previously reached out to the fire marshal and we have received overall support for the exception requests. In one particular example, which was reviewed by the planning commission at their last meeting, the homeowner also reached out to the, the homeowner reached out to the fire marshal, staff reached out to our senior fire inspector who reviews all of our projects. Both expressed general overall support for the granting of the exceptions. If the commission desires that each individual request be sent to the fire district for review, that may incur an additional review cost to the applicant. So at this point, we don't require that because we have gotten that feedback from the fire district. But if that's something the commission wishes to add as additional information, that's definitely something staff is willing to add to the process.
That's helpful. This is a follow up. Who is, that is, is the fire inspector reviewer a town person? Or is that a fire district person?
That is a fire district employee.
Got it.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'm going to close the question part. Are there any public comments on this agenda item? Please raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we've got at least two. When I unmute Rusty. Rusty, welcome.
Thank you, Craig. My comments focused on the citizen interest here. Dylan began the presentation by saying they're trying to better serve applicants. But in addition to applicants, we have all the residents of Portola Valley who have an interest in this as well because we have a policy to favor undergroundering of utilities and to try and move towards the undergroundering of utilities. And the citizens of town would like to know if that's being eviscerated through waivers. This is not an emergency. So I don't understand why there's no staff report that notified citizens of what this would be about. There's no attachment of the 2014 memorandum that was referred to that reiterates the practice that previously applied. And there's no request or formation of an issue to formulate a policy. Does the planning commission have a policy about when utilities are, are ordinance requiring undergroundering of utilities will be waived or not? Or is it just deferring to a negotiation with every homeowner who is trying to lower their cost? And I think that the interests of the citizens, the citizens in town requires notice of this issue through a staff report that informs us when the agenda comes out, what the subject is, through copies of the relevant information, the 2014 memorandum that was referred to, and a suggestion either for or against a policy by the planning commission. And if for a policy, what is the policy? I don't think we should be crafting that on the fly with no notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. And I would say, you know, I think this was just staff coming and looking to get some input from the planning commission. I don't think we're ready to craft policy yet. But I think your point here will take and is, as much public information as we can get in advance, I think is valuable. Betsy, you're up next. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Chair Taylor and Doll. I, I had two points. One was in the prior meeting when these two applicants received their waivers. I, I was interested that the committee was not united and and together on the purpose of the, of the process, whether the purpose was aesthetic, undergroundering, or fire driven. And there was conversation around it that things had changed and that perhaps the purpose had changed. But, but it was, you, you yourselves were not yet settled. And so I would just want to, to learn more from you about what is driving this regulation. And then I appreciated very much that Anne took us back to the then and now. I thought that was a useful orientation. I don't know when now came into being, but it's much, it's much more, it's a bit arduous. And one way that I thought of, as I was looking at what to me was a key driver were the trees. And then someone brought up a very nice point about, you know, this can be like an appraisal. It can be done to order. There's a certain amount of latitude. And I thought of our own wonderful conservation committee and their list of significant trees. And at a minimum, just like the very low cost photographs that are requested, which you could probably do with your iPhone. Could you not also ask for a report on whether these are, you know, the photos of the trees and are they significant? Please send us the measurement of the diameters or the circumference, whatever it is. I think it's diameter, tree diameters, so that you learn whether they're on the significant tree list or not on. Because to me, that would be driver. If, if we're concerned about a 70 year old Monterey pine, I, you look at that quite differently than you would a 100 year old oak. So those are my inputs and thank you for taking all of these two cents in and making common sense out of it.
Thank you, Betsy. Craig Hughes?
Yeah, I just thought I'd throw in my opinion here. I, I find myself aligned somewhat with Rusty, which has not been the case at many items which have come up recently. But in this case, I, I think, you know, we, we have this ordinance for a reason and I would be. But in this case, I I think, you know, we we have this ordinance for a reason, and I would be very cautious if I were you in implementing a set of rules that would allow every applicant to become an exception and be exempted from the from the regulation. The purpose of the regulation is to underground as much as possible in town. As we discussed last time, the origins of that may have been aesthetic. But the council is not without good reason going to repeal the current ordinance and pass an identical identically phrase new ordinance for a different reason, just because we have fire safety issues now that we weren't contemplating when we originally passed ordinance. So I think there are important reasons that continue to exist to want as many applicants as possible to abide by this by this ordinance. And the exceptions should really be a rare case, not a common case. So as you're contemplating this and how you want to put it in practice, and I understand staff's reasons for wanting to get more clarity and to be able to provide applicants with more clarity on when they may and may not get exceptions and what might be required in order to hit that hit that threshold. The goal is as much undergrounding as possible and really only exceptions in the cases where there's no alternative. If that, if if, you know, the planning commission thinks that's that's not the way the policy should be, you're free to recommend to the council that we change the ordinance. But the goal of the ordinance is as much undergrounding as possible.
Yeah, and I I took the staff report a little differently than you did. It seemed to me that they're looking to require more to get an exception, not make it easier. So I think their problem is they've gotten a lot coming in and they didn't really know how to deal with them. So I I took it as staff was actually trying to, so to speak, close the door or at least make it much clearer what it would take to get through, not to encourage exceptions. So
I I don't disagree with that. I'm just talking about the the ones that have come up recently. They they tend to get approved when people ask for exceptions. And I think if there is some clarity to be had, it should be made more clear to applicants that you need to be really exceptional in order to get an exception.
Yeah, great. Thank you for your comments. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to bring it back to the commissioners to basically discuss your thoughts on what staffs presented and and kind of where we want to go with this. Does anybody want to lead off?
So I could, or do you want to go in?
Go ahead.
So so to me, when all is said and done, it comes back to cost here. And, you know, even the discussions of the trees and all that really comes back to cost. I mean, so if we're going to have somebody underground, we want them to avoid the trees. I'm pretty sure in almost any case, you can make a longer trench and and get to the house and avoid the trees. You know, we heard that PG&E would even consider up to five right hand turns, which would end up being very expensive. So it all comes down to me on on cost. I'm totally on board with we want to encourage undergrounding. And I know I did it myself before it was even required, just because aesthetically it was nicer that way. And we were doing a big project anyway, so it's small in the in the total. So it's only on these small projects that I that I start to worry about. And again, it just comes down to total cost, my mind. But I don't think we're talking a 10% increase in cost just to find an exception. I think we need to I don't know whether I'm heading towards a percentage or a dollar amount. But it's gotta be something on the, you know, kind of the 50 to 175 to 100% more in in my mind to justify maybe not doing it. And I'm really thinking of it in specific cases, too, in the sense of we're trying to encourage solar, we're trying to encourage electric cars. And I think I'm more likely to, I don't know whether exception is the right word, because we we sort of toss that around. The code actually allowed for us to do this. So it's not like we're saying, don't adhere to the code. We're saying the code specifically allows us to do this. So I'd be kind of interested in exploring the the solar in the car, you know, as an area where, yeah, we're willing to, you know, if it literally comes down to, it's going to double the price of the project, and you're not going to do it because of that, you know, then then I'm thinking an exception may make sense. But in general, certainly, you know, large projects or anything like that. I don't think we want to change it at all. We want to go through with the spirit of it. So those are my thoughts in terms of kind of where we are on it. And and again, I'm not sure if you want to do percentages or total cost here, but but I do think we want to encourage the the solar and the electric cars and and not prohibit them the our undergrounding requirement. That's it.
Great, thanks, John. Anne, you want to go next?
Yeah, I had about the same exact thing. We what we've considered is cost when people have asked us, and it did seem a shame to me for somebody to have a small upgrade, especially to get their, you know, electrical service up to sort of a modern standard, and then it triggered something that was on the order of that same cost that did seem high to me. And I'm wondering if we should even go back to the town council and ask them to put a percentage number in there. So it's not, you know, I think as a group, we were debating, I think I've already said publicly that, oh, if it was five or 10%, I expected him to do it. If it was 50%, that seemed too high. But, you know, I'm just making that judgment on my own. Might be nice to hear the council say it. And I agree with John, people often bring up the tree, but I was very happy to hear that PG&E allows five writing angles. I think you can go around the big trees, that that's not likely to be a reason people can't do it.
So Anne, just to follow up a bit on that, though. So I'm not sure we would have to go back to the town council in terms of, I'm thinking aloud here, in the sense of, you know, what I'm trying to do is is maybe more give residents an idea ahead of time whether or not this is likely to go through. I'm not sure we don't have to look at them. But I but it's sort of like saying, don't even buy, almost like I want to give staff the don't even bother to bring this to us unless it reaches a certain certain threshold so that the expectations are set of the residents on there. And then, you know, we can still look, take a look at it. I mean, it hasn't been that many. I mean, we got a couple in a row, but it's not like we saw any prior to that in the last four years. So I don't know that I feel like we have to actually change the code or I'm more dealing with, I want to set expectations and and, you know, throw some of these, not throw them out, but basically say, look, that 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 doesn't fit our general criteria. So that's sorry, that was my jumping back in.
Good, I agree with that. And then, you know, on that list that Dylan had with the then and now, and the now was a much bigger list. I think it's sort of a shame if people had to spend all that if their project was clearly, you know, the project was really low cost and the undergrounding was really high. And maybe they only have to do all those extra things if they're getting close to our threshold and they want to kind of prove that they're over.
Okay.
Because I also want to encourage or think the town wants to encourage EV and solar and and safe electrical connections. So.
Judith, Nicholas, who wants to like to go next?
I'll go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I thought a council member Hughes's comments were very helpful. The direction, I think, is pretty clear. And whatever guidance we put together, basically, if we, I hate to say it, Craig, but if we took his Craig's language and for the avoidance of confusion, council member Hughes's language and simply put it in quotations and put it on the fact sheet and handed it out, I think that might be that might be very helpful. The terms in the language itself, the practicability, is a cost based analysis. And that's what's been driving us to cost. It it sounds like the issue of cost to Commissioner Cox's point is a should be put at a higher percentage perhaps than it has been in the past. And the other considerations concerning sustainability and not creating a disincentive to heavying up or renewing your electrical may maybe a maybe a less significant issue. It may be that there there the additional cost doesn't create a significant disincentive. And if it were to create disincentive after our conversation now, that's an issue I believe that the council would need to take up and not an appropriate issue for this body to take into consideration. So I I think this is all quite helpful. I am pretty focused on the issue of fire, recognizing that there are issues of aesthetics that come into play as well. I would like to see a formal response from the fire district, whether it's a fire marshal or a plan inspector accompanying any request for a variance. I'm less inclined to be looking for a specific utility plan in most cases. If one is simply doing a EV or solar, it shouldn't require that. It's a very straightforward kind of operation. It creates a disincentive, but I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's a needed element. And to Rusty's point, I think that taking action now would not be in our best interest, but the issue could be reagendized after staff has had a chance to take into consideration the views expressed here and then bring it back to us for some form of recommendation.
That was my impression, Nicholas, of what they were. That was the intent, by the way. That's the way I read it. So, okay.
Good.
Judith, you got comments?
Yeah, so Dylan, can you put up the slide where you're actually asking us the questions you need feedback on, just so I can target my comments? Okay. Okay, so I do think that I'm concerned about setting checklist when I frankly am not completely sure what the purpose of the code is. Aesthetic is very different than fire. And so I do take it as our job is to make sure that the current code is is promulgated. I mean, undergrounding should be preferred. That that to me is pretty simple. To create a submittal checklist, however, to me requires a little bit more guidance and public discussion probably on the on that regarding whether we're talking about aesthetic or fire. I mean, I do take Craig's word. It's more aesthetic. But to me, if we set a percentage of of a project that if you exceed it, it it could be more likely to create an exemption. I think I'd set that percentage differently if it's aesthetic versus fire. And so I'm a little a little bit at a loss to know how to create that checklist. But I do think, based on the practical experience we've had recently of people coming to us and us sending them back for more information, we might be able to at least help streamline the process, which is serving the public so that they know what information would be relevant. I would generally support creation of a submittal checklist because I think ambiguity is not going to be welcomed by the public who's trying to plan their project. So that would be good. I don't think today is the day for that. And, you know, the ideas that have been discussed so far are all valid. But I personally don't know what to support because I don't know what the actual goal of the of the undergrounding policy really is. And I think, you know, maybe it's helpful for the the council to to reconsider that at some point. But without that information, it's hard to know. But I think we can probably come up with a handful of items that as a routine, if it's not very costly, let's ask for it. If it is costly, let's pressure test which of those three items with the check that are costly are really needed. And I I don't have enough information today on that to comment, but I I think that's the way to go. In terms of evaluation criteria, I mean, we're here to apply the preference for undergrounding as, you know, the community members. I I do think you can, you know, it's not our job to be creating the legislation about, we want to prefer, you know, EV projects versus just expanding, you know, your your household. So it's hard to know how to do that in a way that's serving the public interest today. I think we we certainly should do the checklist and still have a robust discussion, but I'm not as inclined to establish criteria, because then, once you have them, I think people are inclined to apply them in every case. And I I'm not sure I'm convinced that's needed here. So I'll turn it back to you, Craig.
Great, thank you. So I'd say my comments on this, I I generally agree with my fellow commissioners. But I would emphasize that I do think that the town policy is pretty clear. It's to underground. And I agree with John's point that, you know, it's sort of a cost benefit. But I'm pretty hesitant to start down the checklist because it's the ones that I've seen, it's sort of my experience, is these things tend to be a little bimodal. Either they're pretty obviously deserve an exemption because there's a gas main or there's something that's preventing them from doing it. And even PG&E is going to say, we can't do this undergrounding project. Or it's the stuff should get undergrounded. And so having a long, expensive process to come up with what is often, I think, a fairly direct answer that we probably could figure out pretty early in the process. I guess I'd like this to try to find what those triggers are. And and I don't know if that's getting PG&E involved. But I think having a long checklist where there's, you know, hundreds, thousands of dollars spent just to generate paperwork to hand in to staff feels like a wrong way to go to me. And rather really say to somebody, the goal here is to underground. So give us your best case for why you should get an exemption. And for me, frankly, I don't think it's, well, there's a tree in the way. That doesn't sound good enough to me. And it's expensive. I mean, unless it's really truly prohibitively expensive, that doesn't really sound good enough to me either. So I would think that we could probably, you know, like I said, kind of bifurcate this pretty quickly with the right set of criteria. So that that's my thought on it. So maybe you guys can take that back and and give us some thought and we can have some further discussion. I did want to reemphasize what Rusty said, though. I was disappointed that this was on the agenda with no additional information, because if I were the public, I couldn't really tell what this was. So I think if we're going to have these things at a minimum, and there ought to be a description of we talked about this at the last commission meetings, we're having these problems. We wanted to get your input, just something so the public can parse out more than a kind of a one sentence description. I think that that's a pretty important piece that we could take away from this as well. So with that, I was gonna move on to agenda number three. Is that, are we good? All right. So the housing element update from the town council. Laura, are you going to do this?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So I picked the right person tonight.
And so the commission receives a cover memo on top of the staff report that went to the town council for the April 28th meeting. I wanted to bring it to planning commission as well, because this is such an important topic for the community. So we wanted to receive any feedback from you and provide an additional opportunity for the public to provide feedback if they wanted to through this body. And so we provided quite a detailed And so we provided quite a detailed presentation and staff report to the town council. So the presentation is available on Zoom, so I encourage anyone to watch that if they're interested. It does follow pretty closely to the written staff report. I did include a little bit more background information in some kind of simple terms about what housing elements are and general plans are. I know that a couple commissioners were present for the council meeting as well. So thank you for participating there. So I just wanted to very briefly highlight a couple of key points from that presentation that we gave to council and then have an opportunity for the commission and the public to provide any additional feedback through this forum so that staff can bring that back to the council subcommittee and integrate that as they would like to as we move forward in the process. So we are talking about an update to the housing element, which is one of the chapters of the general plan. And under state law, we update the housing element every eight years. And so the housing element cycle, that what's kind of the everyday language to describe that eight year time period, we say the housing element cycle. The one that we're in right now was from 2014 to 2022. And then we are planning for the new housing element cycle, which is 2023 to 2031. And so the way that we do that is based on very detailed state laws. And a number of these things a planning commission has heard before. And you also hear annual housing element reports on our RENA allocation. So that's been an important term. So for any members of the public that may be new to this conversation, that's the regional housing needs allocation and we pronounce it RENA. And so that's what we're talking about. That's the target of the number of housing units that each community is supposed to plan for during each housing element cycle. So we've had a fair amount of conversation about this already, and there will be much to come. But right now, we understand our RENA number to be 253 units. It it's not finalized yet, but based on the information we have, we don't expect it to change very much. So that is a significant increase over the RENA for the current cycle. We anticipate this update to be challenging for several different reasons in the way that the state law has been written and amended over the last couple of years. So the first is the obvious, the higher RENA number. There's also been changes in state law that make it harder to identify the housing element sites that may be used in order to reach those numbers. There is also a new requirement. It's called affirmatively furthering fair housing. This is a very important goal about reducing barriers and increasing racial equality, which is important goal that the challenge that comes of it is that this is a new requirement and it's not totally clear yet how it's going to be implemented. So guidance is just coming out to help us with that from the state. There's also been some changes around how zoning code amendments that are associated with housing elements are processed and the timing of those and the requirements for those. So that creates an additional challenge for us moving forward. So for the proposed work program that we presented to council, a significant amount of this work is going to be done through 21 elements. And that's a collaboration of all the cities and towns and the county in San Mateo County. We've been working together. This is our, I believe, third housing element cycle of working together on the housing elements. That's where it got its name, 21 elements for 21 cities, counties in the county. And so the council has already approved a contract with them to do a significant amount of work. And their scope of work was included in a previous staff report was attached to this one, if you're interested in those details. So when we're looking at this update, we know that the town has traditionally met its RENA requirements through accessory dwelling units. So ADUs previously called second units have been how we've achieved our numbers. We do have a sprinkling of affiliated housing units that also count. So like in our most recent report, you'll recall there's units from the priory that were included there. And so we're thinking just as a starting point for discussion, you know, we haven't done any official projections yet, but maybe there'd be 90 to 180 US that may be produced in that time period. Maybe we'd have policies that would result in more, but just as a basis to to start talking about. Maybe the town would need to plan for 150 to 160 additional units beyond ADUs. And so it does seem like it'll be necessary to consider a host of land use strategies in order to be able to meet that target number. So staff recommended that the town council form a subcommittee to guide that process. And the council did form a subcommittee of council member Wernicke and council member Alves. And so they're appointed and staff has begun working with them on some of the next steps. Staff also recommended that we hire a consultant or a consultant team with a lead to assist us beyond what 21 elements is able to provide. And the council also did express support for that approach. So in general, the major work elements that we have identified are the update to the housing element itself, the update to any other general plan elements that may need to be updated for consistency. So probably the land use element and probably the map, the general plan map. It's also important to remember that the safety element also has to be updated on an eight year cycle. And so we're talking about that as well, and we'll be coming back to council to get additional direction on the safety element. But at their meeting on the 28th, council did emphasize the importance of the housing element being safe and the connection between those two and really figuring out how to explore that connection. We anticipate that there'll have to be zoning code amendments to codify the policies that come out of this process. And we also know that there's going to have to be environmental review under CEQA of some kind. We're not sure what form that would take because we don't know, you know, the scope of these changes yet. And so we've we provided an estimate and we have some ideas of what that might entail, but the details of that, you know, would be forthcoming. So in recognition that the community outreach is a very important part of this and the consideration of these major policies, the council agreed that it would be appropriate to form an ad hoc committee specific for this purpose. And the staff report includes quite a bit of detail about that formation of that ad hoc committee. Very importantly, the composition that council discussed and agreed upon is 13 members that includes two town council members, which are the same as the subcommittee, two planning commission members, which would be appointed by this body, one ASCC member, one member of the newly formed race and equity committee, seven members of the community. And those residents, those participants would be residents and they may be owners or renters. And then council also expressed some interest in making sure that we brought in some different voices that we haven't always heard from before, trying to connect to employees and trying to collect to housing advocates and those people who may be in touch with the people that are trying to secure appropriate housing. So there is also discussion about the selection of that committee. So the outline that's in the staff report was also received well by the council. And so that is our direction moving forward. So in addition to the ad hoc committee, we outlined a couple of other ways that the community outreach process would work. And so one of those is direct input from the full council and the full planning commission. So we imagine that there'll be probably three check in points at the beginning of the process. Once there are draft policies that the committee has landed on, and then when there's a full draft housing element. So those may be maybe joint meeting with the council, for example, as a kickoff, or they may be individual meetings where we bring to this full body the results of the work that's happened so far. And then for community wide outreach, we imagined kind of the same three check in points at the beginning of the process. Once their draft policies and then also when there's a full draft housing element to do community wide outreach and get the broad perspectives of the community. And then we wanted to make sure we're drawing on all of the expertise of all of the town's committees. And so we proposed kind of a committee of committees where one or two representatives from all of the committees would be invited to meet to hear what's being proposed and to provide any feedback on it. We also heard in regards to the communications plan, the council's interest in making sure that there were frequent updates and detailed information on the website so that residents would be able to track it and have a consistent source of information. So the staff report includes a timeline. It is a challenging timeline. And it is the timeline in order to comply with the state law and receive certification. It includes working towards a full draft housing element in about September of 2022 so that HCD could do a round of review and then get it back to the town for final approval in late 2022. So it is challenging and the ad hoc committee will have a large task in terms of being very focused to be able to move through a lot of information and in that time period. There's budget and staff resources if the commission is interested within the staff report and some discussion about the consequences of non certification for for communities that don't comply with housing element law. So that's an overview. It's the shortened version of the long presentation that I gave to council on the 28th. So I'd be happy to try to answer questions. This is certainly an evolving area, and so some of your questions we might have to take back and look into or get back to or to kind of feed those into the process. And then we'd be very happy to receive any feedback that you have on this that staff can take back to work with the council subcommittee as we work on forming the ad hoc committee, retaining a consultant to help us and working on the work plan. So that concludes my presentation and looking forward to hearing your feedback.
Thank you, Laura. One question I had, maybe I missed it. The the sort of three check in points, where are they on the calendar?
And they are.
I don't need to exact, but I'm just like, did I either miss it or is there a time you expect them to come in?
So conceptually, they're at the beginning. And then when we have draft policies and then when we have a full draft housing element. So we I've estimated them in the in the timelines. So there would be one in the third quarter of this year. And then in again, in the fourth quarter of this year, because we would have draft policies. Then when we'd have the full draft housing element would be in the second quarter of 2022.
Okay, yeah, I think the fourth quarter was that it just says key policies. It was not clear to me that there'd be a draft at that point, but that's that's your expectation.
That the key policies would be conceptualized, right? They may not, there may not be language formed around it, but the ideas would have some consensus by then. Yeah.
Yeah, great. All right. So commission members, are there questions for staff?
If I may, to follow up, Chair Taylor. Following those check in points, the the draft would then come to planning commission for one or two reviews before it goes to council?
Yes, I think that that's, I think that that's accurate. Yeah. The way that I've got the tentative timeline right now is there would be these check in points where the feedback funnels kind of from the community up to the ad hoc committee. And then there's input from the planning commission and the council sort of down to the ad hoc committee. And then the ad hoc committee synthesizes the feedback from the community and from the decision making bodies to help move the plan along to the next step.
And and that next step is to the planning commission and then to council?
Yes.
And alongside that presumably will be some form of, as you mentioned, CEQA compliance document.
Yes.
How does this process map onto or replace, or maybe it doesn't, the previous discussion of having a general plan update? Is this in addition to, or will some of the same issues that were being considered previously also get folded into this process as well?
It's such a good question, right? And when we started talking about the general plan update in a in a comprehensive way, we were talking with council and and the commission and the community about it, we really didn't anticipate at that time how big arena number would be and how important it would be to have this really focused discussion around housing. And so as two things were happening at once, the pandemic was happening, which limited our ability to move initiatives forward. But also the process was unfolding for arena allocation. And so when we started to become aware of how high the arena allocation was, it started to make more sense to us to focus on the housing element update because those policies are such critical policies for the community. And then really put focused work into this and then see how that work is going and then revisit the question of a comprehensive general plan update and see if that is warranted or needed after this policy work is done. Because perhaps this will be comprehensive. You know, it will be, it will capture a lot of those important policies. And then all the general plan will need would maybe be some sprucing up and some new maps, those types of things. And so it has been an evolving question as we through this.
So to synthesize, is it fair to say that the idea of a comprehensive independent review of the general plan has been tabled for the moment and will be revisited as appropriate following completion of the of the housing element and its ripple effects throughout the rest of the general plan?
I think that's generally fair to say. I would add that also the safety element will be updated at the same time. So we know that that will occur. So housing element and safety element, and to use your words, any ripple effects of those two elements. And then the council has in their priorities for the coming fiscal year to just revisit the question of the general plan and see, you know, if what steps should be taken next? Is it appropriate to start a comprehensive update or should that wait until completion or some future time?
That's that's helpful. So just to to put a coda on that, it would be helpful for me if you could remind us at an appropriate time, maybe at the next meeting, what the primary goals were to be met in the comprehensive general plan update that is now being largely tabled.
I can answer briefly, and that is to say that the council's direction in regards to the overall general plan was to only do an initial step, which was an assessment of our existing general plan and what may need to be updated. And so the only goal that we've established in that process was to just say, should we look at the general plan and decide what warrants study? So we didn't get far enough to sort of establish goals for a comprehensive update process.
Got it. So it's just a meta evaluate. It's been a while since we did a comprehensive. Maybe it's time to revisit where we are and we'll go and create a process to evaluate what it is that we might want to actually review.
Yes, I think that's a good description.
Okay. I think that I think that does it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Other questions for staff?
I have one, Laura. Would, how does the work of 21 elements and the consultant and this ad hoc committee play together? Do they overlap or do some feed into other ones?
So 21 elements is doing a lot of technical work and analysis and initial drafting of policies and some sections of the housing element. And so they're drawing from resources from the regional government and data analysis and those types of things for us. Then the consultant that the town will hire will assist with communicating with the community and the ad hoc committee and structuring those meetings and discussion. And those those kinds of conversations. And then the ad hoc committee will actually discuss like what's coming out of the analysis. Like an example would be like, we have to have a certain number of sites that will accommodate a certain number of units. So from 21 elements, we would get guidance on what the laws are around that. And then the consultant would help us put a package together. And then the ad hoc committee would actually have the discussion about what are the sites? About what are the sites that would be appropriate.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for staff?
Yeah, following on, first, I think the, thanks for putting together the overview, I listened into the town council and this was a good kind of shortened summary, a couple of follow-on questions though Laura. The role of the consultant. On red page twenty-six, it says they would review all elements of the general plan and propose changes for review. That's pretty broad and is it to be implied that that is primarily focused on the housing element and maybe the safety element, I just want to understand the scope.
It, we do anticipate that that the consultant and or staff would look at all elements of the general plan, but only for the purposes of consistency. And so if there is a new policy in the housing element that shifts something in another element. We need to update those other elements to be consistent, so we would not be seeking to change any policies and any other elements. Unless there was using Nicholas's word a ripple effect that we needed to change for consistency.
Okay, thanks. Then in terms of twenty-one elements, I I know we've used or worked with that group before. How do the packages proposed here for engaging them relate to how extensive we've used them in the past?
It's difficult to compare directly because the housing element law has changed. And the work effort now is quite a bit larger than the last cycle, which was quite a bit larger than the previous one. So this time, the town is using twenty-one elements for the full package, the full services that they're able to provide. My understanding, but I'm not sure, is that the last housing element cycle, the town used slightly less than the full package. And hired a consultant planner to assist with that process.
Okay, and right now, the getting, the package described also talks about rezoning, et cetera. Not at a granular level, but what is their role, are they supposed to come in and say to create these sites, you should rezone these areas or like if you can comment and you might not be able to, how does that work?
Well, we're still working through the details, but there's a couple of pieces that are coming together. And so A-BAG, for example, has created a very detailed mapping tool. Of the Bay Area where they've actually plugged in a lot of parcel data. And so there's a mapping tool that we can use to help us with our site inventory. So twenty-one elements role, for example, would be to help us navigate that tool. Maybe pull out the relevant data, pull out the right maps so that we could then bring those, they would make suggestions like here are some things you should consider and then we would bring those materials to the ad hoc committee for discussion.
Okay, that that's very helpful. I guess the last question I have is the the safety element overlay and I know that today is about the housing element. It's been a while since we've done the the safety element, right, the the fire fire policy, et cetera. Is it realistic or how big of a burden is it going to be to get these done? A little bit in tandem or a lot in tandem, I mean ideally they work hand in glove, but I I think that's a lot to be looking at, any reactions from staff on on that piece or should we stay tuned for the next discussion?
I agree that it's a lot to look at, I think that it's very important to look at it, I think it is. All of the communities in the Bay Area are on the same schedule. So we are all required to update our housing elements and we are all required to review our safety element and update as needed. All on the same. And so it is very challenging for every community. And I think candidly, it's even more challenging for a small community considering such important policy points.
Yeah, that that makes sense, oh, the last question I do promise now, the ad hoc, the the ad hoc committee that looked at town-owned sites that were potentially suitable for development for this purpose, for housing purposes. Does that fit in at all because it sounds like the twenty-one elements will also be telling us what sites might be viable, but not from a town-owned perspective, is that how it works, they just label any parcel? And then we've got further analysis on ownership and town interest after that?
Yeah, I I think the work of the town-owned committee will feed right into the housing element update process. And so since the committee has already done work on certain sites, we'll have information about whether they are viable housing element sites or not.
Okay, thanks, that's it.
Thanks Judith, John, you got anything?
Not as a question, when we get to the discussion, a couple of items.
Yeah, no problem, alright, so at this point, I'd like to open it up to comments from the public. So raise your hand, looks like we've got Bob, let's start with Bob. Hi Bob, welcome.
Thank you. The safety element is going to require just as much work as the housing element, in some ways, it's going to be more daunting, the world has changed since the safety element was last updated more than a decade ago in two thousand and ten. The staff report indicates that the housing element and the safety element are to be considered in partnership. And the two challenges addressed together, this is exactly opposite of the right approach. I also at the planning commission insists that the task of updating safety element be removed from the mandate of the housing committee, the optics of jointly addressing housing and safety are horrible, as you know. There's a perception in town that safety has been subordinated to housing mandates. Linking the revision of the housing and safety elements directly feeds this perception. More importantly, it guarantees that safety policies will be compromised for these outside mandates, which are onerous. And would raise questions about the quality of the final product. There's a reason we don't allow drug companies to run their own clinical trials, we want the people running the trials and analyzing the data to be objective, unbiased and free of influence and the same considerations apply to developing the safety element. The people addressing our safety should be blinded to and insulated from the considerations of the housing element, thank you.
Thank you Bob. Looks like Mary's up next. Mary, welcome.
Hi Craig, hello, wonderful working group, thank you so much for what you do. I'm afraid Bob just took all of my speech away and I guess I wanted to second that theory that what we need is more back and forth to reach a good process that I think lumbing it together and this sort of mishmash of consensus is not getting us a vibrant product. I I think it's very important that we have two separate committees to to provide this information. Thank you.
Thank you Mary. Looks like Betsy's up next. Betsy, welcome.
Thank you so much, I I've gone on the record once before of being disappointed about the absence of the more robust public engagement that the general plan process as it was being teed up at the town council for almost two years. And then our decision to be more efficient. And I just wanted to put in a second plea to consider the butterfly effect because as I heard it discussed tonight. That that the idea that the ripple effect, that that housing and safety together. It's not the butterfly, they they it it will have profound ripple effects, those two chapters that you're taking back. And so as Laura then responded. We'll review later if it's even relevant, we will consider a gen- a a broad general plan review if it's even relevant and I thought that that was a profound but but accurate statement because it seems to be unlikely to be relevant anymore. Because it will touch so much. I think that it being a member of this town, there is an active interest right now. And I think to capitalize on that active interest rather than to suppress the voices is so much more healthy. I appreciate all of your collective concern and your individual concerns to to meet the people that you serve. Thank you for considering with seriousness my remarks.
Thank you Betsy. Okay, looks like Rusty's up next. Rusty, welcome.
Thank you, I think the the comments that were just made are so important. That I want to put a different cast on them and try to explain why I think it's so important for this committee in particular to take this question seriously about how we are going to go through the process of amending our housing element and how we're going to go through the process of amending our safety element. The planning commission is the committee in town with principal jurisdiction over our land use policy. Over our zoning, over our subdivisions. And you have a particular responsibility for safety. To ensure that when we build on this landscape, we do so in a safe and prudent manner. And we're entrusting, all of us, our futures and our survival to your good judgment about how we use this landscape. We're becoming increasingly aware and sensitive to the fact that while there's great economic pressure to use it ever more rigorously, ever more thoroughly, ever more cheaply, it's also a very dangerous landscape. And we could make a catastrophic mistake very easily here. So for that reason, I think you ought to fall back on the genius of the American system, which is separation of powers. Checks and balances. And we ought to separate the consideration of what our housing policy is from the consideration of what our safety policy is, so we ensure that we have a thorough and robust airing and consideration of both of those policies, we don't compromise one for the other or the other for one. And I think you as commissioners want to hear the best arguments and the best analysis on both sides. Not get a half-baked or subordinated set of policy choices. Thank you.
Thank you Rusty. Is there any other public comments? Looks like Christie, you're next. Welcome Christie.
Yes, thank you, I just keep remembering back to the ADU gathering and we were all at different tables and we we got, a lot of us got to participate. I'm just concerned if there's seven people selected, is that really enough? For all of us to be heard. So I dream about a process with more people involved. And I I might even throw out and I'm I'm out of the box here, but put circles on the lawn outside the library. Let us meet in the circle six feet apart and let us really hash through what some of our concerns are. We're not getting a lot of people at meetings, in fact, we don't know, we can only see seven of you. So how many people are at this meeting?
There are seven attendees in addition to the panelists.
Okay, so we have fourteen out of four thousand people. So I'm not feeling like everyone is really hearing what we have ahead of us. So I'm just hoping that more people could be educated and get involved in many ways, thank you.
Thank you Christie, I'd also say as a citizen, you know, passing the word around, I know that staff is always open to public comment, so I think the important thing is that we get the message out. Okay, any more public comment before we move on?
The phone person, I think it's star nine if they wanted to make a comment, right, to raise their hand.
Yeah, I don't see that they had their hand raised, so.
Well, yeah, because they, anyway. In listening, so if they 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 would do something if they heard.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, so I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Who would like to lead off?
I have a couple of items.
Okay, John, why don't you start?
Okay. The first, I got to figure out how to say this without without antagonizing people. Yeah, so so one of the things I've noted, because I've attended actually the council meetings, obviously all of our meetings. I actually attended the 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 county meetings and listening to those. And one of the, you know, I get concerned when I keep hearing the same misconception. Like, at least what I believe to be a misconception again and again, and I'm wondering if there's ways that we should deal with that, and I know we started to do frequently asked questions kinds of things. But the one that that I think keeps coming up, and I think came up again tonight, is that we have a number of members of public that seem to think that all development can be stopped until various fire safety concerns or infrastructure concerns are solved. And that somehow that's a gating factor. You know, and I think that applies to the 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 housing element, it applies to the Stanford Wedge project, it's applied to other projects. And it's actually, my understanding, could be wrong, is that that trying to say, no, we're not going to, we're going to stop development because we want to deal with these other things. And claim that, you know, well, we're not doing it because of safety and somehow that's a legitimate thing to do. I actually, my understanding is that that would actually be illegal. And I'm I'm wondering if we should somehow, if I'm right, we should probably phrase that so that people understand that that's the case, so asking us to not to stop everything isn't going to happen because we're not going to do something illegal. So that's a suggestion, the other thing I think that may fall into the Q and A category. You know, is that we've had a number of suggestions along the way that somehow we're violating state law regarding our town processes, plans or code. And that I think Kara has actually even, our legal representative has actually addressed this. And that that would be a good thing to put into a frequently asked question that, no, we've actually been pretty clear about housing and safety and we are adhering to the, you know, all of the state laws and in that area. And I think the other thing that I've seen come up is some discussions around Rena and whether or not you can fight the number, protest it, what have you, and I know people were talking about Southern California. And actually got the data wrong, in Southern California was something like fifty plus, they were ahead of us timing wise. Fifty plus exceptions and requests were formally asked for and I believe two were granted. And people were saying, oh, that means you can get, maybe you get something and it's like well, actually the two that were granted, well, one of them had to do with the state got the map wrong, I mean, they literally, it was just the map was wrong, so that's the kind of thing that gets through in terms of protesting it. And I'm somehow thinking that we got to communicate that to people, so, you know, consistently coming back and saying, well, you need to protest it. Is kind of, it's not going to happen. And we need to move forward, so those are some of the, I was kind of dealing with this, I keep hearing these misconceptions or what have you and it's like you know, part of our communication obviously is trying to deal with that and communicate appropriately to people, so those are my initial thoughts on it.
Thank you John. Anybody else have comments they'd like to make?
So you can go in.
Okay, I I understood that the safety element element needed to be updated at the same time as the housing element, but I did not hear that this ad hoc committee is going to do both. But some of the public comments seem to hint at that. What's the answer, Laura? Is the same co- uh committee, is it going to just work on the housing element or also do safety?
The council direction at this time is just for this committee to work on the housing element. Um, we'll be talking about the safety element with the council um in a couple of months, probably in July, to get into that in more detail. The feedback from the council, when this item was discussed, is what I summarized in the cover memo. And that was to ensure that the housing element was safely done and to understand the connection between the two elements. Um, so that's how I understood the direction from council and tried to summarize.
Okay, great. So um the uh worries that some people had that the this housing commit or that the safety element wouldn't be done with a very thorough eye because people were so trying to meet, the housing is is not not a present uh issue right now. That these committees will work separately, although knowing that eventually it has to make sense to both both um issues.
And I would say to the Planning Commission, if you see value in one approach or another, then um certainly staff can bring that um to the council discussion. Um, or Planning Commission themselves can represent that to the council discussion. So that would be very appropriate um and welcome if you have a a path that you feel like would would best serve a good outcome.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it, Ian?
Yes.
Go ahead, Judith.
Okay, thanks. Um, so first, um, having been through the last cycle of the housing element review, it's my recollection that while this ad hoc committee composed of representatives of the public is established, first of all, those meetings of that committee can be publicly attended by the public. And maybe it'll be Zoom or maybe it'll be something else. But Laura, is that accurate?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, and then in turn, additionally, on top of that, they had other public input fora. For example, each committee member last time was actually asked to go out and get small comment groups and solicit comments. And there were formal um ways that people could submit comments and ideas. And actually, some of the uh ideas for additional housing to be considered for the future are in an appendix to the report. And those came from the public in large part. So I would encourage the council to and the ad hoc committee uh to put in place those types of special outreach and special of avenues for input, because the public does have very good ideas and we'd all benefit from hearing them. You know, my guess is a hundred extra units, we could easily manage through ADUs. But it's that extra hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty, I don't have a clue what we're really gonna do. And so we, I wouldn't leave it late. I would probably find a time after the committee gets comfortable with itself, the ad hoc committee, to open those up. But I think it's very important that both everyone who's here, all these seven people, go out and tell seven other people to be attuned to the ad hoc committee meeting times and to be submitting ideas. Um, those are very important. Um, secondly, I think that we've got to be pragmatic here. Um, we have deadlines for a housing element to be done and analyzed. We've got to make submissions within a certain time point. And there are really important, significant issues here. So I don't want people to think it's either or. Either we sit and, you know, protest or think of ways of be banding together with other communities, which was discussed at the town council meeting, or we comply. I think that's a false choice. If the town council, which can decide to push back, can decide to, but with legal penalties, as John said, or can decide to band together with other communities to see if there's a different way to go, that's their policy decision. Um, and it's not at the cost of shutting down this process. It has to happen. That's my own view. Um, it's a big process. There's a lot of pieces, and if we want public input, the only way to do that is to get started now and be very diligent on it. Um, I would encourage the separate safety committee. I think that's nothing but a good thing. Um, the planning commission would benefit from an analysis uh created by that, because I would imagine that's a fair amount of effort. And people tasked with housing element analysis are just not going to do it justice. And i- it having been through that ad hoc committee process before, it's very time consuming. So if you, you know, I I think the council will have to decide what that looks like. But I think having people who are focused on safety and then bringing it together at some point to the planning commission may be very helpful. Um, and, you know, I think we all uh i- this is going to be a different process. It should be a different process because we're trying to achieve something very different or, you know, evaluating uh something that's a bigger project than we did before. Uh, so taking advantage of the twenty-one elements and the extra consultants, I absolutely see the um the benefit in that. Um, the only concern I have is making sure everyone, like the consultants, are very laser focused on what the task at hand is. The the language that I mentioned before, that was very broad. Um, we don't have time and I don't think it's a good idea to have things open that that aren't focused on our goal. We could do that separately, but as part of this process to achieve that timeline, we're going to have to be very efficient or the 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 group that is tasked with that will have to be very efficient. Okay, that's it for me. Uh, Craig?
So can I can I add to that? Um, so Judith, just to support your point of the timeline, you know, I I don't know if you listen to it, but the the state is getting really tough on if you don't make your numbers. Um, and to the point where they can step in and start rezoning for you. And I I don't remember, is it ten or twenty per acre? You know, units per acre, kind of, they have the ability to come and just say, fine, you didn't do it. We'll fix it for you. Um, and now whether or not they would actually do that or not is debatable, but they clearly have the authority. So we do not want to miss our submittedals, just supporting your point.
Thank you. Nicholas, you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. Um. I think it's a couple of fold uh on process primarily. And that is one, uh, there is a crosswalk between fire and housing. You know, and I think it begins with the recognition that this environment in which our town is built is supposed to burn once every eighty years or so. And if we don't recognize that and that there is compromise between more housing and safety necessarily, then we're doing ourselves a disservice.
Mm-hmm.
And uh while I think that it is probably useful to have two different committees for the reason at least that uh there's different expertise that's needed. In fact, I think that this body and council ultimately are going to have to be able to knit things together in a way that makes some sense and makes some political choices that are, that there are the choices. Recognizing that, I think that there are some initial technical guidance that the housing committee can benefit from. Uh, as where you would want to not build, for example, what are the parameters, what are the distances, what are the set? Those kinds of issues that need to be informed, uh, that need to that the that the housing body needs to, needs to understand. So I think that there's some basic information that needs to be provided such that you don't have two committees wandering off in two different directions. Uh, that the safest fire resistant location is in the middle of a parking lot. And pretty sure that that's not, that's not going to work either for the housing situation or for the kind of town that we want to, that we want to live in. So I think that there's some crosswalk and that needs to be thought through. Having two different bodies that have their own expertise and probably their own special prejudices uh is something that's good and desirable. And then there's a political process that's going to be needed to to wed those together. The other process piece is I think that there is some opportunity to have a larger community-driven process. And it can't be a evolving process that takes months or, as we've seen in some cases with general plans, years, of course. But I think that there is an opportunity to at least have sentiments and strategies identified over a fairly short period of time. And I don't know if that involves uh six-foot circles. Uh, I I'm pleased to say, and if you'll indulge me, this was my second shot day today. Uh, and uh, and I, and I think we're 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 all making some progress there. And I think we've all become adept or more adept, at least, on the use uh uh of Zoom. Um, and there are other examples of mass, large-scale public participation that takes place over a short period of time, where at least broad strokes can be understood. And uh there is that, there is a genius uh in uh in the public. And I think we should avail ourselves of that. Having a smaller focus group, uh, again, that's this educated by some technical excellence on the issue of fire and probably the other way around with fire on housing uh would be useful. But I think ultimately, we need to create also enough time for this body as well as the uh uh the council fundamentally, to be able to make a decision and to give staff enough time to be able to pick together a uh environmental uh report that can withstand muster.
Is that it, Nicholas?
That's it.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, I think I agree with most of the comments I've heard from my fellow commissioners. Um. I think there's wisdom in the crowd, so I would encourage us to find some ways to get that input. Because I think we'll also make sure that we're getting it from a broad cross-section um of our population here. So I I think it's important that we set up some sort of input mechanism. Um, and maybe multiple, you know, maybe we do both some large meetings and some ability comment. But but I think giving the entire town the opportunity to uh participate in some form is important. Um, and it'll give us a sense for what people care about. Um, the other is I'm, I think I've heard pretty much unanimous, certainly the majority of the commission um looking to separate out the safety from the housing element. And and not that that was ever being proposed as being merged, but but I would also agree that I I think there's two different expertise and and they obviously need to be aware of each other. Um, but I think the idea that there's two groups that are kind of working through the separate technical details will probably be important. So that's all I have. Um, are there any other final comments from commissioners? Laura, is there anything else that you you think you need tonight?
Oh, that was great. Thank you.
You got it. All right, so, going back to my agenda. All right.
And Laura, I I I'm sorry, Craig, I do have a piece on this. And this Laura, i- i- it's going to be just so important. And and we heard it, uh, I think from from many, many of us, perhaps not particularly me, but making sure that the that this body, the council and the residents are really aware of what our obligations are and how zoning codes uh re- relate to the general plan, what it means, what the ripple effect actually is, and discussions probably in more technical, horizontal and vertical consistency. And what the implications are of a general plan and a and a a- a- and in the land use regime for not having that kind of consistency. As well as what's required as a matter of law. And what's desirable to have from a town perspective in terms, for example, of timing. Is there, in that, there there are guardrails that we have. And then there are things that we want to do. Um, and we need to be really clear as to what the difference are, what the differences are. I'm sorry, uh Chair Taylor, uh, I just took us off track.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. Thank you for your input. I just, you were getting slight delays, so it's hard to tell whether you were done or not. So I was just waiting to make absolutely sure, so. Okay, good. No, thank you for your comments. I'm sure that's hel- helpful for staff as well. All right, so then, moving on, um, are there any commission reports? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on. Are there any staff reports?
Just that we are working on the revisions to the ADU ordinance in response to your feedback um in anticipation of bringing that back to you, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are you getting suggestions on uh how to uh craft it such that it's, we have more incentives on the uh to 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 stay within our setbacks and guidelines?
Yeah.
I guess I'm saying is, I hope you're getting them and I'm encouraging the rest of the commissioners to send them in if you have any uh ideas.
Yeah, we got a couple of ideas um of in additional incentives. And based on your feedback, we went back to look at everything that could feasibly be an incentive. Um, and so that's what we're trying to implement at this point. So we're trying to capture everything that we can think of. We also had some, after thinking about it, we had some more thoughts too around um the fire safety exemption and how we, the the current rule applies and how we might be able to expand that. So we're still working on some of the legal aspects of that, but we have some ideas there too. So I don't want to say too much, but um I think we will have something good to bring back to you.
That's all.
And then since Nicholas did get me slightly off track, uh, the other thing I was going to ask is if you're interested in being one of the commissioners on the housing element update, would you send me an email? And then I will collect that information and then we can sort of figure out the right process for deciding which two members we select.
I was going to suggest the non-Stanford Wedge people, but hey.
Well, that that will certainly, then, you know, limit the number of people that can do that. But anyway, please, um, if you're if you're interested, um, please send me your interest. And I guess also, if you have potential conflicts of interest, send me those as well, so that, you know, where we're trying to figure out the right selection, we we can, you know, take everything into account.
And then a- as always through the chair, I'm sorry, we have to be mindful of the Brown Act when we're having that conversation. And just so the public knows, we will have an agendized item or the council or that, I'm sorry, the commission will appoint two members. So just for for the public to make sure they're tracking.
Yes, thank you. Yes, it it will not be a mysterious process. All I'm looking for is to people to let me know they're interested so that we can agendize who's interested and then have that discussion. So, thank you. All right.
Yeah, to that end, that should probably go to the planning director. Respect.
I I don't think it matters whether it goes to me or the planning director as long as it doesn't go to more than three of us. But um I'm certainly happy to have it go to the planning director. So if you would send your interest to the planning director, I will discuss it with the planning director after you send her her your input. All right, so now, moving on to number six. Um, approval of the minutes. Is there discussion of the minutes? Comments and corrections? Comments and corrections?
I have one comment. Read page 48, first big paragraph, third sentence. It's quoting me saying, "I was not convinced that fire safety concerns were integrated into the thought process regarding the four foot setback." I would go back and listen to what I actually said, but my recollection is that I said that I was, I did not see a rationale in our town for the four foot setback to yield additional housing. I was trying to say that I didn't see the link and, but it was contextual for our town. So if you could go back and check the actual words, that would be great, but I didn't say this.
Any other comments or corrections before I open it up to the public? No, no, no. So I had a few. I don't know whether I was being particularly fuzzy in my speech, but I found several things that had my name attached to them where I was having a hard time actually parsing what it meant. So on page 44, let's see if I can zoom into this. Second paragraph, is waiting to hear from another agency comment an application not deemed. Sorry, I'm having a hard time. Don't have enough screen real estate to see you guys and comment on this. The demon application is complete, that the sentence just kind of doesn't make sense. I, I think the intent was just to make sure that we got input from all the other agencies before you guys accepted the application, that's certainly the later. But if you could review the transcript and see if that first sentence is actually what I said, because it feels like there's some words missing there.
Craig, it seems like it should say an application should be deemed not complete, but they should go back and listen.
That, that was my sense as well.
That was your intent, yeah. I, I said, that was definitely your intent.
Oh, yeah, that was definitely, yeah, my intent is, and, and the paragraph later, you know, later on, it sort of gets to that intent, but this sentence I just found sort of, like I said, kind of unparseable. And then, um, on page 45, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph, it was the same thing suggested that for the incentive, there be language included that folks have to use the maximum floor area. And again, that doesn't seem like what we were talking about. I'm guessing what that was part of was that they could use the incentive, but they could not exceed the maximum floor area. I think that was the intent. So if you could, again, just look at that and clarify it. And then finally, on 47.
By the way, I think you were suggesting that you only got the maximum floor area as an incentive, if you met this, kind of the whole setback area. That's how, that's how I remember it.
Okay, yeah, it could have been, yeah. I'm, I'm sure that my goal was to make sure that if you're going to get incentives, that you were sort of following this sort of other. And then on page 47, one, two, three, four, five, the sixth paragraph, second break in the sentence, it says, "Commission disclosed", and I think that was "Commission discuss any general". So this is where we were talking about how we were going to go forward. So I think disclose should be discussed. All right, and I think that's what I have. So it seemed like the transcription was a little fuzzy this time, or maybe my speech was a little fuzzy, so. Okay, so that's all I have. It looks like we have some public comments as well. So let me start with Caroline, because I know she's been patiently waiting. Caroline, welcome back. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. I actually had raised my hand a couple of times, but didn't get to speech, to speak, sorry. I guess I will have to relate that in a, in a mess, in, in an email. But on the minutes, page 47, once again, I have not had the time to listen to my comments, but I think, you know, when it came to authority to Laura, and Laura, don't take this personally. I respect you for everything you do, but I think I just generalized that I don't think staff should have authority to make decisions. And I really, to honor our handbook and our organizational chart, I think you guys should have more power. You are linked to or connected to the residents, and that's how it is. With all these new processes that they are inventing, it becomes more complicated for everybody. And believe me, I've been on the housing element since 2013. The legislator changes all the time and they have no data. It's projections after projections. And so I would be happy to participate in this. But with the last ADU initiative, I was probably present every meeting. And our, what we said was not recorded. It was always, it disappeared. And I know that's a public made comments and you can go back. There's even publications of comments, ours were not included, but there's duplicates of the comments that they want to hear. And that is one of the main concerns of what has changed in Portola Valley, what we didn't have before. Residents are very engaged, but many have given up. Okay, because what's the point? They go, "We've attended these meetings, our voice is not being heard. We have expressed our concerns, it's not being recorded and it's not being expressed. Thank you so much." Oh, and one more thing, the safety element, the town is behind. And so I think that should be a priority. Thank you every, for everything you do for us, thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. So if I missed you and you, you had your hand raised earlier, I apologize. I try to be pretty diligent about the public comments, but maybe somehow it didn't show up. One thing I would say is that written comments are always the best way to get your opinions and thoughts into the record. So whenever possible, if you can send something in, because then we can make sure it's there. I mean, you know, we, we can clearly make sure it's there. It's in the verbal comments get summarized as part of the minutes. But the staff's always been very good about taking any kind of written comments and attaching them to the discussion. So I think from the public's point of view, that's the best way to make sure that your opinions and comments are clearly expressed in your own hands.
And I think, I think to reinforce that, Craig, you know, people often try to put their hand up when it's no longer public comment time. So, which, which can happen, but it moves on and the meeting moves on. If you send it in on email, then it will be included in the next appropriate point for including in our information flow. So, so I think, reiterate, I'm just saying, yes, definitely. I don't think you missed anything when it was appropriate for public comment on the raising the hands.
Yeah, great, thanks, John. And yeah, I, I think that's absolutely right. If for some reason, public comments closed, email is always an open venue. All right, let's move on to Christie, she's got her hand up. Go ahead, Christie.
Yes, thank you. Read page 47, fourth paragraph. She encouraged the town to explore not Belmont, but Montessorino. Can you please change that? And my other comment is to always put, the Rena talk was on 422, it's still not on our calendar. I know you all get the staff reports, but we count on these things being on the town calendar, even if they are a county talk. So 413, housing element, and 422, Rena. I, I really hoping you can get this on the town calendar, even if it's given by the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. All right, any other public comments before I close it? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as suggested, with the suggested reviews. What do you guys, who wants to move and who wants the second?
I'll second.
Okay, Nicholas, I'm going to give you the, the motion and Anne, I'm going to give you the second for tonight.
That's very kind of you, thank you.
My, my pleasure, glad to help, so. All right, all in favor of approving the minutes as moved?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so with that, I think we have come to the end of our meeting.
I moved, we adjourned.
Ask for a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
There is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for your participation and we're only down to one attendee, but for all the attendees, thank you as well. Good night.
Bye, everybody.